Is the roar down?
Yep.
So you got his rocks here?
There you go.
Success.
On the button. Sorry about that. All right, I'm going to call the meeting, the special meeting to order. A roll call.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here, Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Trustee Funes Bliss is absent this evening.
All right, before we do the civil and for reflection, I've got a quickie housekeeping. Now, realizing there's one in the audience, but just so you know, and just so everybody who's watching knows. Whoops, hang on. Am I on?
Yes, those are on.
Sorry, did I have it on?
No, I turned it off. I'm on, okay. We'd had a long discussion about the committee of a whole, and I wanted to remind people that our board rules state that any time that we have a special meeting, that the board shall meet as a committee of a whole. There's my committee of a whole. So just so it's official, that it's done, and that is eight. So if you want to look it up, please do so. It actually is our page six.
Oh, I'm familiar. We've been working on the suggestions about how to identify some additional procedures, so.
Okay, nope, I understand that, so I wanted to make sure that was very clear. Now, we'll do pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, where did we leave off?
Page nine.
I thought that was not right. I'm sorry, what? I know, well, that's true, I forget about that.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Thank you. Is that you? All right, so our motion's been made to approve the agenda. My mistake for jumping right in. We only have so much time to do this. Okay.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we do not have a disclosure of conflict. I don't think we have any, so that's none. And for item five, public statements, obviously, no one's here, so there's none, even for our committee of a whole. New business, says introduction and discussion of your 2024 fiscal budget recommendations.
All right, to pick up where we left off, we left off on page nine, under contractual and professional services. I can't recall if we'd already asked questions about that item, or if there are any remaining questions. Do you need a budget? Okay.
I have a quick process question. Going through this as we're going through it, does it mean that we've accepted page one through?
No.
Okay.
You haven't voted on anything, just asking questions at this time?
Okay. So page nine, we're talking about?
Contractual and professional services. Do you have any, anybody questions on that?
That's where we left off at.
It's not page nine, because I thought we were.
Page nine.
Page nine?
Yeah, so we went through the assessor information.
We're going through it now.
Well, that's what I thought, but.
Well, that's where she's starting, right here.
That's where I'm starting.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
That's.
We already went through that. We're through it.
Okay.
Okay, whatever. We're going to do the contractual and professional services, correct?
Are there any questions?
Yeah, that's whatever works.
Hearing none, no questions. I believe the rest of these are self-explanatory, but obviously, printing and publishing and postage are for assessment notices that are sent out annually. Miscellaneous is for a data stipend, and then dues and memberships and education and training are for Clinton County Assessors Association and the Michigan Assessors Association.
Boy, they went up quite a bit, didn't they?
It's accounting for the full-time position that's being added to the department.
Oh, so it's for two people?
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha.
Correct.
Wow, that was, okay, gotcha.
Moving to page 10 is the clerk's office. Salaries for the clerk include a longevity increase in addition to the 3%. Staff salaries has gone up significantly because there will be two assistants in that department now as a result of a board action. Benefits will also increase due to that new person. The other item that may be of note that's gone up from 250 to 600 is mileage reimbursement. The three people in that department often attend training with the state or with the county, so that's, that has been increased for the three employees in that department. Questions on the clerk's department? Hearing none, we'll move to page 11, engineering. I have increased engineering by $3,000 to account for the Chandler Road planning that's taking place next year in 2024, in addition to the Webster Road project next year, as well as our sewer master planning. Moving on to Board of Review. Salaries are remaining the same for the five members of the Board of Review. Benefits as well, the only benefits taken out are for Medicare, state withholding, and social security. Other items in that department are remaining steady. Questions on Board of Review?
Mine doesn't have any numbers.
What do you need to look?
Board of Review?
Gotcha. I always need help with this.
That's okay.
Oh, no, it's not, that's okay. It'll come up later, so just so you know.
Do you have questions for the Board of Review?
The only, the only thing I had, if there was a question at all, your reimbursements for who?
The?
For all of the members?
For the members of Board of Review.
Okay. Okay.
For training, they go to or something? Is that what mileage reimbursement?
Yes.
So they don't do the zoomy thing that everybody else?
They may because their, because their mileage and their training over the last couple of years has been down, so I'm assuming that they are, in fact, zooming.
Well, that's what I saw it, because it, well, you've got the same thing, $100 across the board.
I held that, and just in case we needed it, so.
Gotcha.
Okay. Moving on to the Treasurers Department on page 12. 3% salary increases for both the treasurer and the staff, the deputy treasurer. Benefits are for the two full-time positions. There's been about a $4,000 increase in contractual and professional services, which includes the monthly accounting services, audit preparation, audit services for year-ending, and then year-end budget services.
So we have an auditor that comes every day, correct? Okay, comes once a week?
Our accountant comes once a month.
Once a month.
Okay, so we say, once a month for the accountant, and then he just goes over the books?
He balances the check.
He reconciles the account, too?
Okay.
Yep. The auditor, obviously, is once a year, and then any other additional services that might be needed from them. Mileage reimbursement is included here. The board, when former treasurer Westwasser was here, made a motion to have a $200 per month stipend for the treasurer's vehicle use to go to the bank every day during the week.
Well, I thought that was because he was going to St. John's.
Correct.
Okay.
That is also where she goes, to the bank. The bank is.
Because we have banks. But you're still going to St. John's?
Yeah, that's where the commercial lending, commercial business is.
Just saying, we have other banks that are here by the same, but that's okay.
Not who banks it.
Okay, whatever. Okay, so that's a stipend. Okay, got it.
A small increase in printing and publishing for the tax bills that are sent out twice a year, as well as the postage. And then prior period adjustments is staying at $35,000, and that's tax tribunal, IRS fees, or any P R E changes that may occur throughout the year.
So that's like a catch-all?
It's mainly for the tax tribunal changes, but yes, the other items can be included if they are charged. Page 13 includes the rest of the notes for the Treasurers Department, but then it also includes computer services. The main difference in this will be a webpage redesign and a move to Civic Plus, and that would be under the top item webpage for $25,000.
That's for our webpage?
Correct.
That's, okay.
All the other lines in that department are holding steady.
Are we going to have a contract for $25,000?
With Civic Plus, yes, there'll be a contract, yes.
So we'll see that?
You will see that.
Okay, thank you.
Is that to maintain the page?
No, it's actually to redesign the webpage. It's not been redesigned since I did it probably six or seven years ago.
So redesign and keep it up as they?
So Taylor does the upkeep on the website. After it's redesigned, she will do that again. But currently, it's, it, it needs a new platform, and they have easier platforms to use than what we're currently using, so. Mm-hmm. It's come a long way. Ordinance compliance on page 14. Items, salary increase to 33. This, this department is split with the fire department, so half the expenses related to salary benefits and telephone are split between here and the fire department. The rest of the items are only for this department.
I'm sorry, telephone and what?
Salary benefits and telephone are all split with the fire department.
Along with the telephone, gotcha.
Correct. Are there any questions on this department? Al?
No mileage and reimbursement?
There is an ordinance compliance vehicle. It's a former police cruiser that's been repurposed for the ordinance compliance department. So there's gasoline that will be included, but that's a new line item to be created with the treasurer.
So Karen, I just want to make sure, your recommended budget for the salary is the 33,926?
Correct.
And what is this 40,000?
That was a request for an increase in salary.
Okay. And you've talked to the person about?
I have.
Okay.
Yep.
Who would argue with that?
She's only suggesting the 33,926.
Out of this, out of this part.
Out of this part.
Yeah, so it's, it'll be 66.
But you're recommending 40.
67.
No, he, he requested. Asked for 80, and she's recommending 66,000. If you double that, I'm sorry, roughly, roughly.
This is a fusion, use estimate. Moving on to page 15. This will probably be the biggest unknown in our budget for next year in its elections. Because it's a presidential election year, because of all the changes due to proposal 22-2, I, it's unclear to me at this time if these are even close to actual numbers, but we'll do our best, and then we will come back to you if there are any changes merited. For salaries, I've included $55,000. It takes many people to make our elections run in each precinct, including an absentee counting board, which we plan to, blah, blah, in 2024. As well, the benefits for those salaries. Operating supplies, which includes, give me just one second, please, there's no note on that one, but, so I'm guessing ballots and any?
Pans, papers.
Anything the precincts need to be prepared for Election Day, okay. And then postage, so this is an item that Brenda and I discussed this afternoon. The township will most likely be responsible for sending out the A V applications. The state may cover postage for the returned ballots. And it's unclear if we will receive that upfront, or if that will be a reimbursement.
We pay for sending, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
We pay for sending out the A V applications, and we will pay for sending out the ballot. The state is supposed to pay for the return of the ballot.
Okay. It's unclear how that process will work, but it'll most likely be a reimbursement process.
Quick question. When you're talking about your salaries for that, you mentioned the absentee board, but that hasn't been established yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, but that's.
Soon.
God, I hope so, because I've been waiting years for that. But when it, when it comes to that, when you're figuring out your salaries for that, you're figuring?
I did my best at figuring out my salaries. I went back to 2020 and seen what they did, and we're going to increase the hourly rate, increase the hourly wage.
Close enough.
Yes, the election inspectors to 18, chair people to 20, so it went up from 14 and 15 to 18 and 20. So I tried to take all that information into consideration when.
And 20 is for the cha, the chairs? Oh, there's for the absentee board.
Wow, that has to have the same thing, you have to have two chairs and then election workers.
That's what I thought.
How many election workers do we have now, Brenda? Like 60 or something?
Yeah, 57, 60.
So we always could use more election workers.
What was our 2020 budget, do you remember?
I'd have to go, I have it back there.
I just wondered how much we went at, this new change has pushed us.
Hmm, I don't know, I can get that information for you.
Yeah, we can get it later.
Okay.
I just wondered how much.
So we always need more election workers.
Oh, we always need election workers. The, I think one of the biggest challenges for the clerk's office is that some people winter in another state while we're having our, our March primary. So it becomes difficult to find, especially at that time of year, because most of our election workers are older adults, retired persons.
Well, and Sherri, you have to have a chair that's a Democrat, a chair that's a Republican. And then you have to have different worker, you have, your workers even in the precinct, you have to have it kind of divided, so it's.
Right.
You have to, you know, get an equal.
Rounding people up would always be a good thing to try to do.
Their chairs per precinct?
Yes.
Okay. So you're talking 10 chairs?
No, no. We have two chairs per precinct and then election workers, so.
But there are five precincts.
She's saying five precincts.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Next year, though, we'll have 12.
No, I see what you're saying.
Because we'll have the A V counting board, so you'll have 12 chairs and co-chairs.
Any additional questions for the election department? Okay, moving on to building and grounds. So this is what you're going to see at the bottom. Contractual and professional services are mainly for generator lease and document shredding. When you move into building repair, these are where most of the larger projects come in. Fire department building repairs. Parking lot crack seal coating, township building repairs, eaves, including tuck points, and then senior center wall insulation and exterior, both siding and any rock that, any decorative item on the outside of that building.
How old is the fire department?
That's just what I was going to ask.
Thank you. That's.
2002?
Okay, and it's never been updated on the outside, or just?
So I think it's, it's, it hasn't needed, with regular maintenance, it hasn't needed anything major until now. It's, it's coming up on 20 years and, and needing some additional work.
Okay.
Yeah, we did a lot of work on the roof.
Mm-hmm.
Couple years ago.
Yeah, well, well, former superintendent Watiu was here, we did do some work on the roof. It was leaking into the inside, so. Just trying to stay up on the maintenance. Repair and maintenance of equipment, line 933 is for a furnace replacement, should it be needed. Many of our furnaces are older and are likely to be needing to be replaced. Repair and maintenance other is for miscellaneous repair and maintenance, H VAC, generator transfer switches, and compressors. 972 will need to be reworked a bit. If, I included this in the budget, the campus access control system, which is the electronic door locks. That was built into the budget before we had all the information on the door locks and the security cameras. So most likely, this will need to be reworked. It also includes some additional cabinets and hardware in the police kitchen. And then we're looking at a building department remodel for the office down the hall, and a drinking fountain water bottle refill station for the township. Land improvements, 974, we are looking at a gazebo and privacy fence for the back courtyard, concrete for the D P W lean-to, and then this has been reworked since this year's budget, but the fencing gates with operators for the D P W pole barn up on top of the hill.
Can I go back one, Karen?
You can, please.
The building department remodel, is that? Are we just updating the building department? Are we dividing it into different offices?
So I'm looking at dividing it into two, because we no longer have additional office space here, so, and with the few new employees that we're hiring, it's, it's already tight, so we're looking at some additional space.
Okay, so two, two offices.
And then the last item, 977, equipment purchase would be to replace this deus in the boardroom here that we're sitting at. I believe we obtained this in the 70s or 80s from, from, I believe, Duett Township.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe not a replacement, maybe just a facelift. Give it some love. Legal services, I have moved that up 10 grand. We are seeing an uptick in the amount of FOIAs that we are processing, as well as employment issues, so I have increased that budget there.
I'm sorry, which one was that?
Legal services.
Got it.
The bottom of page 17.
Yep.
So moving on to the Department of Public Works, which has five full-time employees, excuse me, and two seasonal employees, April through October. You will see the salaries and the temporary salaries for those individuals at the top, 702, 703, and then their benefits under line item 714.
Your seasonals are, what, which month to which month?
At the bottom of the page, there's a note, April through October.
That's what I.
They begin helping us the month of Tom King Junk Day, and then they help us through usually leaf, leaf collection?
Yes.
Yeah.
I was going to say, leaf collection's got to be in there, November.
730, which is uniforms, includes uniform stipends for five full-time employees. Equipment purchased for this department will include the replacement of a John Deere mower with a trade-in, and then a snow blower for the tool cat.
I have a question with that.
Yep, please.
They're working on, they being the planning commission, and we are township, is working on sidewalks. So is that John Deere going to take the place of?
That John Deere is a mower.
Well, that's what I thought.
So the tool cat would be what would need the snow blower, and it also has a blade implement that we can use on it.
So that will be enough for what sidewalks we have?
For what we have publicly now.
Yes.
Yes.
Because when you are assigning to say someone's responsible, the owner for their home is responsible for the sidewalk kind of thing.
You are correct.
Where it has, for us, where we're responsible, because it's township, is that what you're?
So it would be for the sidewalks that are on township property. So here, the B C C, James Cousins Memorial Park, Westwasser Park, any, any of those public, public places that there are parking spots or, and/or sidewalks.
Okay.
Don't we have a broom that goes on the front of that, or were we going to buy one?
Well, that's.
I think, I think when we purchased it, we got the broom. I think that was something that trustee Benzie had been particularly interested in, because he thought that we may be able to sweep the sides of the, the roads when they became just dirty, or, or there was buildup.
Sweep the sidewalk, too.
Right.
Michigan State sweeps more than they plow.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware of that.
Because if it's a dusting, you can't plow it, you just.
They can go up to two, two and a half inches.
I was going to say about two and a half inches is what they. Unless it rains and you have ice under it, then it's a different story, but they still sweep.
Anyway, so.
Exactly.
The next line item, 978, is for vehicle replacement, and the director of D P W has asked to replace the 1999 dump truck at a cost of $80,000, which, that will in turn, that, the old one will come to the board for disposal, which could mean we would put it out for bid, or we would sell it directly. So there will be some revenue that we see as a result of that disposal. Drains are included here. We have a drains-at-large fee from the county, as well as the Raimi Chandler drain payment that we make.
So that's a revenue that's coming in?
No.
No.
I didn't think so, because when you said that's what we're getting, it's like, that's an expenditure.
Yeah, that's an expenditure. Oh, I meant, I'm sorry, I meant for the replacement of the dump truck. If we sell the old dump truck, that would be revenue.
No, I got that.
Yep.
Yep, I got the revenue, but then you went in and.
To drains.
Yeah. Because I thought that didn't sound right. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then the last item would be roads. We have the Webster Road project next year, and then I've included additional funds for whatever recommendation the, the Clinton County Road Commission might make, and the, and the road committee might make to the board.
I would like to see us add 200,000 to that, from 600,000 to 800,000.
There's the drains or roads?
Roads.
Roads. So you went from 600,000 to 800,000.
If we don't use it, it'll go back, but if, if it's there, and we have something that needs to be done, we got a little money there to do it with.
Additional comments?
I, I see that we've only paid 49,912, and we have budgeted 600,000 in 2023. Have we not did the, oh, we're doing the large.
So we're doing, yes, so we did the Hawk Hollow project, and then we're doing the Anne Gary-Timothy Lane project as well.
So have we not paid for the Hawk Hollow?
We have not received bills for Hawk Hollow.
We've received till the end of the year, pretty much.
Yeah, we've received billing for, in just the last week or so, for the regular items of spraying, mowing, and some chip sealing.
Okay.
But I, I have not seen bills yet for the Hawk Hollow project, or, and the Timothy-Gary-Anne Lane project will be happening in October, so.
Okay, they just seem kind of low for being in October.
Correct.
And so, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you guys take a look at Center Road and some of our other township roads, you'll notice they've got their top seal on that, and the road painted.
Oh, yeah, Upton Road was done and.
They look really good.
At the bottom of page 19, there is a department called Social Services. This is where the payments for the United Way and Mills and Wheels are contained. And I will verify the brush, the roller, the brush roller with Ben, to see if that's what we have.
Yeah.
Moving on to page, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, that's, I'm looking down instead of up.
Okay.
All right, it looks as if the activity for 2023, we haven't spent the 5,750.
No, we're billed usually for those in the last quarters. There's a lot of things that are billed in the last quarter, so that.
So the last quarter goes from?
Now until the end of summer.
Now until the end of. Now until the end of December.
Correct, so we should have gotten a bill at this point or not?
We've not seen a bill yet.
So if they don't come to that dollar amount, that just goes back into the general fund, correct?
Okay.
It will. It will bill us.
They will. Especially Meals on Wheels. It's my understanding that they're having a hard time currently, so. Moving into the Parks and Recreation Department on page twenty. Salary increase at three percent. Benefits for the individual in that department as well. Other items, we have reduced other recreational programs. In seeing that our activity has gone back up and recovering from COVID, it may be that that's not enough. I may have undercut that department.
We still have that department?
Yes.
I thought it was Park Advisory.
It's.
Why do we still have Park and Recreation?
Because that's what the state chart of accounts calls it.
Ah, so when we dissolved Park and Rec.
But there are recreation.
We didn't dissolve the actual line item. It's kind of like DDA. We didn't dissolve their boundary, but we dissolved their access, so I'm not sure how we did that.
So parks, parks are still handled?
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But this line item, Parks and Recreation.
So recreation. It's, it's just the name of the department.
Right, so we left the department in place, but we changed to the recreational advisory.
That's just a committee.
That's the committee.
No, I understand that. So what I'm not understanding is why we still have Park and Recs?
You have to.
We don't have Parks and Recs.
This is a chart of accounts and this comes from the state, so we don't get to decide what it's called. It's just the, it's the.
Okay.
The, the line that the state recommends that these type of activities are contained in.
They recommend it. Yeah, it's not a mandate.
Oh, no, it's, no, you have to have, title that.
They title, they tell us.
Tells you what you're not entitled.
Even though we don't have a Park and Recreation?
That's right.
Okay, gotcha.
We still have parks and we still have recreation.
But not in Park and Recreation. That's, I guess where it gets for me.
So the director of DPW is also the director of Parks, so his recommendations are contained in here as well.
So we.
So we pay our recreation person out of here, but any recommendations for the parks is also in this.
So on page thirty, there's also a farm. I know. Okay. I know. So we took two departments, we merged into one, so we have one on committee. One, I, I understand, that's, our budget's a whole different kind of thing. Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have notes for this department. We may have to revisit that at the next meeting because I don't, for some reason, have the, the projects that are contained in. Repair and Maintenance Other.
It's on page twenty-one, I think, Karen. I think you missed just a few lines.
Nine thirty-five, do you have twenty-one?
Oh, I just cut it off with a.
You just missed a few ones at the front.
With a binder, yep. Thank you for pointing that out. So Repair and Maintenance Other, we have beach sand, tree removal, grass seed and fertilizer. Under Land Improvements, we have park lake weed treatment. We are still using goosebusters because that's been an effective tool in keeping the beach more sanitary. And trees and landscaping in addition to that. Under Equipment Purchase, we have three aluminum picnic tables. And then under Utilities, we have internet at West Wester Park.
Are we replacing picnic tables or just?
Replacing, yep, replacing. Many of the ones we've had are, we've had since I've been here, so two thousand twelve, so we're running on ten, eleven years now.
Okay. We sell those or will we just put them in another park?
We repurpose them if we can. If we're able to make repairs and, and or paint them, we try to reuse them. Before we get rid of them.
But the aluminum ones, you'd probably just junk day?
Possibly.
If we can't sell them.
Yeah. Some of them have the powder coating, so once those start disintegrating, it's more difficult to repair those. Moving into the bottom of page twenty-one, we're looking at our operating transfers out, so that's general fund monies that are moved to other departments. That includes a transfer to Public Safety, a transfer to the Senior Center. And then a transfer to Capital Projects.
Now, these are for maintenance or for upkeep when we're transferring them out of general fund? It's for?
It's to supplement their budget to make the budget whole.
So it's a supplement, okay. So on Public Safety, you went down?
They had a fund balance that's being used.
Okay.
So it didn't require as much from the general fund.
Okay, and Senior Center, you went up to?
Fifty-five.
Because of the two days a week?
It's mainly staffing for the additional two days a week.
Capital Projects went down, way down. Yep. Nice, why that?
Yep, I'm going to that page.
Thank you.
It's actually on page thirty-eight.
Okay.
So there was already a balance in there of thirty-four thousand four hundred and eight dollars.
Oh, so we're just adding it up, so it's pretty close.
So we're adding the fifty, yep, to make it the whole fifty thousand that we had committed to it previously.
Does that make sense to me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to page twenty-two, Public Safety Fund. The millage, this is the revenues for the department, so the, so the millage will generate a revenue of one point six million approximately. And then the operating transfer in, just discussed previously, is six hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. This funds both police and fire. Moving on to the Police Department on page twenty-three. Salaries contains contractual raises per the contract with the union. It includes a new officer position for a total of thirteen officers. Assuming there is full staffing, part-time salaries have been reduced down to four thousand. At this time, I believe we have one or two part-time employees in that department. Staff salaries, the next line of seven oh four is actually for the administrative assistant position and the office manager position. The next line item is for the salary of the chief. Police overtime, line seven oh eight, it's confusing because it starts with part-time salaries, but it's actually the overtime. Has been increased because of the staffing shortage. Most of our current officers are working overtime at this time.
I get a question with that.
Mm-hmm.
If we're paying overtime, but we're hiring a new one, how does that?
It depends on candidates. At this time, we, we don't, we don't have candidates, so as soon as we get candidates and we're able to hire.
So that.
We have four, we have four open spots right now on our police department. Out of nine road patrol, we have five staffed. We're, we're short four people.
But we're asking for twelve positions for ARPA funds. And that's because you've retired some and some have moved on and.
Retired, yeah. Different positions, yep.
Okay. So you're saying we have five full-time officers?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're missing four. We have one on medical leave and we have three that are completely empty.
I should go back for the money we're getting now. I can go back and do that and be recertified. That's always an interesting piece. We started at five thousand.
So we're looking for four more hires.
Correct.
They gotta be, um, gold certified, they have to.
Or certifiable.
Do we have people applying at this time?
So we do, but many of the candidates that are applying need to go through the academy.
Correct.
And we can only get one or two people into the academy coming, that's coming in January. So we're guaranteed one spot. We're hoping for two.
Meanwhile, they pay overtime.
Exactly, because you only have the five officers, you have to compensate them.
Yeah, gee, surprise.
Of course, there will be a lag, right? Even if you hire someone, it's gonna be a while until they're actually able to be on their own.
Well, they can't, yeah.
Cover those shifts and so that overtime will stay with you even if you start the hiring and it's wildly effective.
Correct.
Right away.
That is correct. Even somebody that goes through the academy in January may not be road-ready by themselves until.
October.
Midsummer. Next year.
If you're lucky.
If you're lucky, you're correct.
Otherwise, just put them out there on their own.
You're correct.
Or buy some of their pants, hey, it works.
You probably experienced that.
Yeah, big difference.
Yes.
Big difference.
Worse and worse.
Constantly. Hmm, that's an interesting. So you really don't have too many of them that are in the office. They're always out, correct?
They, yes, they mostly have to be always out.
Including Sundays.
So does that mean that Gary's out?
He has been, yeah, the lieutenant and the, the chief have been out on patrol.
Crazy, everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
It's a committee of a whole, so go ahead. You follow along. A boomer?
I'm gonna have to ask you where you got that.
We need some more.
We're on page twenty-three.
Again, planned for, I believe the supervisor brought this up a couple of months ago, the payment to Tri-County Metro Narcotics. Always important.
Um, I got a question, Karen.
Please.
Did you, the benefits didn't have, they had a zero balance on the front?
Uh, yes, so I need to go back and recalculate that because I, I did miss that.
Okay.
I thought you weren't gonna give them benefits. Okay.
We won't be able to keep anybody if that's the case.
That's true. So that will need to be reworked.
Okay.
And added. Mileage reimbursement, eight sixty, is contractual for the chief. Nine thirty is repair and maintenance of vehicles. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you've got seven thousand, am I reading it right? Mileage reimbursement and that includes the chief and?
Anybody, like if anybody else needs to go.
So they don't take the patrol car to go to court or?
They would, it would mainly be like if the office manager or the administrative assistant were to do something, that would be, that would cover them.
That's a, that's a jump. Okay.
You been to the gas station lately?
Yes, I have.
I was here tonight.
I was here, so was I. Has nothing to do with it, but hey.
So Karen, it did raise four thousand, like we already said, but are just more people using their personal vehicles than?
Well, you have to count. We have the other, the second assistant over there. So there's Christie and then the new lady, so it could double because they're both on the train.
So the chief's is a hundred dollars per week.
Per week, was that what it was before?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So he doesn't use patrol car, he uses his own personal?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, patrol car when he's here, out on patrol, but personal vehicle in the other time, yep.
No, I understand that. But the mileage reimbursement is for if you go somewhere outside the township.
Yeah, he may go to the Clinton County Chiefs meeting and need to take his personal vehicle or, or, or the administrative assistant may need to take something to the county. So mainly the other employees in that department. Repair and Maintenance of Vehicles, we do have an aging fleet, although we try to replace one vehicle per year. That continues to increase. The patrol cars, when in use, are usually on all the time, even when parked in the back parking lot. It's because they are in need of temperature control, either hot or cold. Education and training has increased due to the new officers' promotions and inflation, the increasing costs of training. And then the vehicle replacement, you'll know, they're changing over to a Ford and also includes a five-year extended warranty. We currently have Chevy Tahos. It's becoming increasingly difficult to get those, so we're looking at changing over and making our fleet. Forward, it's a, there's a, there's an off-road truck that's available.
That's a discussion's been going on for a while.
I actually found it very fascinating, Duett Township or Duett City, I think even has electric vehicles?
They do.
Yeah, so that's interesting to me as well for police.
Did they put in a charging place?
I'm not sure if they did or not, I haven't talked to, to Mr. Cost. It's just, it's different, so.
So are we just doing one vehicle replacement next year?
Correct.
Okay.
The vehicle replacement also includes outfitting it with the, with the front bumper, everything they need inside, the emergency lights.
With extras.
Everything. Moving over to the Fire Department on page twenty-five. The salaries line includes two full-time employees. They're beginning a nighttime shift premium for on-call personnel in order to get people to respond at night. It's a difficult time to have people come in. And then holiday response, and they are requesting two more full-time employees. I didn't expect to get this far. I had the, the fire chief here to have that discussion with us, but.
What line item is the extra two employees in?
Uh, salaries, seven oh two.
Because that's quite a jump. So are we gonna do the first two full-time employees, get them trained?
We are in the process of making offers to the first two. We have selected two candidates and believe that we have additional candidates for the other positions if those are approved.
We'll get them trained and allocated to what needs to be done and how, and then get the second two?
Mm-hmm. And it's working towards having that twenty-four hour coverage.
Okay.
Yep. Seven oh nine contains the officers' pay at the chief's discretion. There are additional monies available for the assistant chief, the captain and the two lieutenants. New this year is a uniform utilizing the uniform line. They are offering two hundred and fifty dollars stipend for each paid-on-call member of the department. Seven thousand dollars for the two full-time employees as well as the fire marshal. And that includes three pants, three polos, one jab shirt, one pair of boots and then a dress uniform. Gasoline and fuel has increased, obviously because of increasing fuel costs and increased call volume. This is also a hard one to predict each year. Repair and Maintenance of the vehicles includes the Department of Transportation inspections on the AC rescue, the AC engine, and then oil changes and pump testing.
AC meaning?
Uh, I don't know. I will have to ask.
AC rescue?
Oh, I didn't know you were here. Yes, you. Yes, you can.
It was then under equipment or vehicle maintenance.
It says AC rescue.
So, um, one of our rescues and then one of the engines, the air conditioning units are going on.
Oh, air conditioning.
So it's just to replace both of those.
So it's air condi, AC is what it says.
Air conditioning.
Yes.
Glad you're here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, it's appreciated.
Stay there for a second? Repair and Maintenance contains, uh, funds for hose and ladder testing. That's annual testing that needs to be completed. Dues and Memberships contains monies for the Michigan Fire Inspectors Association, Michigan Association of Fire Chiefs. Fire Service Instructors and the Society of Michigan EMS. Instra, thank you.
Okay, hang on here. That's a question.
I saw that.
Building repair.
Just me.
Just you, it's just a question.
No, and I can ask, why did it go up for your repair and maintenance? Just because everybody?
For building or for vehicle?
Well, it says building, says building repair.
We've identified projects, um, that, in working with, um, Director of Building and Grounds, see, um, that are issues with the station that we would like to get taken care of. Um, I think, kind of campus-wise, we're the last of getting everything up to par.
So it's about nine thousand dollars more is what you're asking for, okay? And it's just to catch up. Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
This is meeting the whole.
It is.
Karen, uh, eight-six-one, gasoline and fuel.
Mm-hmm.
I noticed, uh, twenty-twenty-two, it was twen, uh, excuse me, twelve thousand, but this year you only went to ten thousand. But you made the notation that, and I agree, that gasoline is going up. I think you would think that you would at least have left your, in a previous year.
Twenty-two.
The gasoline was lower, or fuel, I should say, maybe east as well.
I hadn't noticed that.
That's my feedback, huh?
Thank you.
Nope.
It's. So will you update that and bring that back, Karen?
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Ray. So in addition to the dues and memberships, we have the Education and Training, which includes many of the same that you saw under Dues and Memberships. Um, if anybody has any questions about training.
Yeah, that's quite an increase.
Is that for the full-time, for full-time people?
That was a part of it, um, included in that, um, we annually send members to the Fire Department Researchers Conference in Indianapolis.
Right.
We're looking.
That's a yearly.
Yep, so they, they do, uh, earlier in the week, like Sunday through Tuesday, they do hands-on training. And then Wednesday through Saturday is the lecture portion. What we're looking potentially is to send two members to do the hands-on classes. Uh, we've done it in the past, uh, and they were able to bring back new things to the department. Um, so we're looking to do that as well as still send people to go sit through the lecture portions. I think included in there was our, uh, potential for, um, bringing another training management program in, um, just sort of online training possibly. Just because firefighting is ever-changing and our training requirements by the state have also changed. For the longest time, we didn't have any. Now we have continuing that that we have to do yearly. So that will help us, if a member misses training, they can do an online portion to make up for that.
Does that also cost, when they do it online?
Um, that's.
With his time?
That's, there are times, but, um, the, the Vector Solutions is a program we're looking at that we would, that online training, both for the fireside and the EMS side is covered in that.
Oh, we're gonna go to EMS?
They would be able to do, um, our EMS training online as well.
Yep, because that was always a question. Okay. Good deal, thank you.
And then if you'd like to speak to the Vehicle Replacement? I know you don't have the notes in front of you, but replacement of Engine six-four and Engine six-five, and you're looking at the potential of a lease or a ten-year loan?
Yes, um, so both vehicles, uh, Engine six-four is twenty-one years old, Engine six-five is eighteen years old. Um, we, we've done a great job taking care of them, don't get me wrong, we, we do a great job. Um, but they're getting of age, we wanna try and do twenty-year replacement. Right now, we're looking anywhere from eighteen to thirty-six months from the time the contract's signed until we actually see the trucks. So our thought was, instead of ordering one now and then waiting a few years and ordering the other replacement, if we can try and order both replacements now, we'll get them at the same time, um, and then potentially look at whether there, we can do a ten-year lease. I know some of the big manufacturers have ten-year leases we could sign, or finance it for ten years, um, whatever the amount be, and then we just make yearly payments until it's paid off.
So you're looking for two replacements?
We're looking to replace both engines, that's correct.
So sixty-four was how old?
That's twenty-one years old.
And sixty-five?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
When I worked at Spartan Chassis, the industry standard was fifteen years, is that still the same?
Yeah, um, busy air departments, they look about ten years, then five to ten years in repla, or as a reserve. Like I said, you know, we've made ours size twenty-one in eighteen years. Um, but the, the technology that's changed, even since those were built, they're almost antiquated at this time.
So you really could get by with one, even though it'd be antiquated?
We could.
Okay.
Um, my big concern is just how long it takes once we place order before we see it. So, yes, we could wait in the one that's eighteen years old, but by the time we ordered, if we wait a few years, we're looking at it potentially being twenty-five years old.
But it'll be replaced? Yep, okay.
It all depends if it's your house or the neighbor's house.
Yes, exactly. I get it.
Uh, we have some funds in there, right?
A fund balance?
Yes.
So we have a truck fund, um, that we put, I believe, a thou, a hun, one hundred thousand dollars away into when Bob Libby was still around, um, a few years ago. Um, I would just need to go back and track that.
We should, we put, uh, two hundred, a couple of years ago, I think we put two hundred last year.
Last year, I think we did two.
I think there should be around five hundred, five hundred and maybe seven hundred dollars.
So I'll go back and look for those funds.
Are the older ones worth anything?
Potentially, um, whether we find.
Smaller departments.
I owe, uh, Leasing Township, they just, they have a, a late eighties engine, they donated to a department in the U.P. Um, but I, you know, I'm sure we can find somebody that can potentially grow from, or maybe whoever, which manufacturer we go with, but take them in and trade it.
What does a new one cost?
Um, we're looking anywhere.
Yeah.
Million, two.
Seven hundred thousand to over a million.
Yeah.
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 But that's got all the bells and whistles that.
Correct.
Not going over the top, but making sure we have everything we need about our project community.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you, uh, have experience in, in, uh, like, long-term lease or do you purchase outright?
In the past, I believe the township was purchased outright.
Yes.
Correct.
I wasn't up high enough to make those decisions when they were made in the past, but.
Well, it was probably thirty years ago when I was doing it, but it seems to me, we did a cost analysis and it was at, at that point in time that.
It's correct.
Like an open-end lease would be better because then you can purchase, you know, purchase it out or you can just.
And I've seen with some, um, manufacturers, you do the ten-year lease and then on, it's a tenth year, you buy it for a dollar.
Yeah, so, so that may be something we could look at.
Thank you.
It is a relatively new concept in, in that world, but it's, I think it's worth looking into. Thank you, I'm glad you were here for this discussion. Um, it is five fifty-eight, I don't know how you feel.
It is. All right, so we're on page twenty-sixth at the top.
Oh, no, twenty-sixth.
Oh, no, well, we still, did you want to have any more discussion with it?
If you have more questions, we certainly could.
If not?
No.
Okay, then we'll start on twenty-seven.
Okay. Thank you.
No, my only thought was if there was any other discussion. All right. Do you guys want a five-minute break?
I'd appreciate that.
Okay, let's, because we've got public comments at this point, but certainly, but there was only one here. Oh, we'll close, we'll close the Committee of a Whole, so that's done, we'll go back. And we have public statement, too, having to do, obviously, with anything that anyone wants to talk about. So there apparently be none. So you have board comments?
Nope.
Oh, that went fast, all right, so we'll, we'll say we're one minute, so let's save five after, gives you six minutes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yep.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, challenge a yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.